Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 18th, 2018 Camden Select Board meeting. We're going to head right into our agenda for this evening, which is rather lengthy, so I want to try to keep it on schedule. First, as always, I'd like to ask if there's any public input for any non-agenda item. Anybody else would like to speak to anything that's not in the agenda? Not seeing any, then I will revert to the second order of business, which is the establishment of the rules of order to be followed at select board meetings. This is something we do just for formality every year, technically the first meeting after election, when there could be, well, be new members of the select board, and this year there are not. Mark was re-elected to position, FYI, we are only three tonight because we have one traveler and one ill. So I'm not going to read the rules of order, just a couple of reminders to people that are important, which sometimes get questions on regarding our rules of order. In general, of course, we operate under Robert's Rules of Orders, and we're certainly not going to read that. Two select board meetings a month. Very important to remember, people ask this a lot, for our agenda, we run off an agenda, we don't go off agenda, but very rarely, and only usually in emergency situations or when the select board votes, a two-thirds majority to add an agenda item. Agenda items are open for input from anybody in the town for any issue. We require that any agenda item be submitted to the town manager's office before noon on the Wednesday before the select board meeting. Good reason, we put together the agenda, then we have to put together the packet that supports it for the information of the select board. Also, we always invite an individual to talk to any agenda item during the select board meetings. We do request, we keep your comments as crisp as possible, and preferably less than three minutes. Any, I'm not going to read the rest, but that's the purpose of that agenda item. Back to the third item in the agenda, we have a discussion on the approval of the select board minutes from our last meeting, June 4th, 2019. Does anybody have any comments or corrections on June 4th minutes?
No.
I don't either. I review them, I didn't see any problems, so do I get a motion?
I'm going to accept the board minutes from our June 4, 2019 meeting.
Second.
All's in favor? Three, zero. Good job. Fourth on the agenda, select board reports. Taylor, do you want to start?
Nothing this evening, I'll just say, I'm very happy to see so many members of our police department here tonight, receiving commendations, and their family here as well. Thank you for being here and welcome.
My select board report, some people have probably already seen this, but I wanted to show a quick video. This is the time that lots of migratory fish are attempting to go up into McInnes Creek River if they could, and finally I was able to get a camera down underneath the water and I could see so much more. It's just amazing what's going on down there. So this was just a few nights ago, right in Camden Harbor at the base of Montgomery Dam, and we were able to see alewives, blueback herring, and then also there are a couple juvenile striped bass. So we've been reviewing that with people from the Department of Marine Resources, and that's been very exciting. You can also catch, there's been a seal down there, right at the base of the falls, and then also an otter, like a river otter. So they're really amazing to watch if you get them at the right time, so that's been very enjoyable. Then, this was, I thought the conference, the Build Maine Conference, which maybe Audra will mention, was really fantastic. We learned lots of things there. Almost, I think, five planning board members, four planning board members went, and a couple select board members. And thank you to Audra for bringing that to our attention, and hopefully we'll do more of that next year. Then this was a big highlight for me. I went to the Kids Conference for Change at the middle school, which is in its third year. It's this thing that they do with the sixth graders every year, and it starts off by having a conference where community members come in and present to the students about issues that everybody cares about. And I've done Syria normally and was able to do the McInnes Creek River restoration project this year, and then the kids sort of take their experience there, and then they get to choose an issue that they care about and put on a conference for the community. And it's open to everybody, and every year they come up with the greatest stuff and things that you really wouldn't expect, and this year it was really better than ever. And a couple students actually did their project on the town of Camden's river restoration efforts and dam, more dams and fewer, no, fewer dams and more fish ladders. So they did a really great job, and that was really enjoyable. And then the last thing is, there was a ZBA hearing, meeting, on the rebuilding of this Lyman Morse boat shed. So I have a feeling that's going to sort of come as a surprise to some people to see when eventually that, it looks like, is going to come down. The ZBA did approve the rebuilding of that shed, or of a structure of some sort, in its, basically in its same footprint. So that will be the last red shed. Sometimes I joke that we're going to have to change our town seal, it's blocked right now, but there, I think, are four of these red sheds here in the town seal. And now, now we're getting to the bottom. But they did say they're going to try to keep with the general look and consult with some environmental organizations about opportunities for habitat enhancement, and this is actually, although it's the part of the harbor that kind of doesn't look as nice to, in some ways, it's the part of the harbor that probably has the best habitat, because it's not all walled off. And they seemed sensitive to that, and there was some good discussion about it. So there'll be a number of hearings and planning boards, site plan approvals and things, but anybody that is interested should pay attention.
Absolutely. And FYI, ZBA is the zoning board of appeals, correct?
Right, and so they, you know, it's odd, because they don't meet that often.
No, no.
And I kind of felt, you know, it's quite a learning curve, even just to be able to go in and say something if you have an opinion about it, you know, what it says in our ordinance about what they're allowed to weigh in on versus the planning board, and it's, I found it to be a lot of information to take in, and they did a good job with it.
Thanks, Allison. Audra, did you want to talk to...
Sure, yeah, so just to speak a little bit more to Build Maine, we're lucky to have our, basically our full planning board, half the select board, and then two town staff attend. It was a great conference, it's really geared towards anyone who has anything to do with, you know, building stuff in Maine, whether it be infrastructure, or whether it be development. And there was a really, you know, good array of speakers at the event. Everybody who attended seemed to really enjoy it. There's even some speakers who, I think, they would have been interested, like our assessor, our finance director, definitely our public works director. So I'm hoping next year we can choose to be municipal sponsors again and have more staff attend, and, you know, maybe members of the Economic Development Committee and other committees who were involved in volunteer work in town. So that was a great event, I think everybody who went got a lot out of it.
Did she say she was the moderator? Did she say she was the moderator?
I was the moderator as well, which I'm happy.
We're very proud.
I'm happy I won't have to do it again next year, because it was slightly stressful. Jazz in June just had its first year, it finished up over the weekend, and it was a big success, so as of when I'm saying this now, it finished up a little bit in the black, which is a huge success for an event in its first year.
Wow.
And everybody who went just gave great reports about how wonderful it was, and I'd really like to thank Matt Brown for his work. He did a fantastic job getting the event together, putting in so many volunteer hours to make it work, and I really do think that, you know, this is something that could grow over the years and become, you know, a real draw for the town.
Wow, that's impressive. There was a lot of people in town, in the black, the first, I was not expecting that.
Mm-hmm. I wasn't either.
Yeah, I definitely think that it's going to be, it's going to become big, so thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
The select board just recently sent a letter to the governor regarding the regional solar farm, and we received a little bit of good news that some legislation has passed that would make it more feasible to do this sort of project that we had proposed, where you have a, you know, a regional solar farm that a bunch of different municipalities are investing in. So it looks like the climate for that is becoming a little bit more friendly, and our state senator said that he had been speaking with the Department of Administrative and Financial Services, and they were more positive about the idea of partnering with the town to find a suitable site to host a project like that. And we're also working on scheduling a workshop with Interflue to present the findings of the Montgomery Dam feasibility study slash alternatives assessment, and we've also got another speaker who's going to come to that event, who will be from the Department of Marine Resources.
Nekre is the head of the Sea Run Fisheries Department, and he's a really awesome speaker, so we're excited to have him.
Yeah, so everybody, people, watch out for that if you're interested in that project, because I think it's going to be a really good workshop.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, our harbor committee reconvened two weeks ago?
Yeah, last week.
Last week.
Last week.
Kicking off their agenda, which will be picking up to develop, redevelop, and the work plan for that committee, and reconvening on July 10th will be the next meeting of that committee. Other than that, that's about all I want to bring up, but Build Maine was great, I enjoyed it. One of the nice things about it is you get to hear the perspectives of people from literally away, you know, Washington DC, west coast, whose perspectives on things are a little different than some of the things we see here in Maine. And it's good to have that perspective when you're looking at some of the seemingly modest things we deal with in a town of 5,000 people. But anyway, onward and upward to our consent agenda, which tonight has six items. And our consent agenda tonight is a request to approve the following eventler's license renewals for Bagel Cafe, Birchwood Motel, Blue Blackberry Inn, Camden Deli, Camden Island, Camden River House Hotel, Druthy Bear, Hawthorne Inn, High Tide Inn, Subway, and Quarry Hill. Secondly, the request to approve the following lodging establishment license renewals for the Birchwood Motel, Blackberry Inn, Camden River House Hotel, Hawthorne Inn, and High Tide Inn. Next would be the reappointment of the town manager, pursuant to Article II, Section 5 of the Town Charter. Fourth, reappointment of the road commissioner, pursuant to Title 23, MRS, Section 2701, Rick Seibel. Reappointment of the harbor master pursuant to the harbor and waterways ordinance, Article III, Section III, Steve Pixley. And lastly, the confirmation of the town manager's appointments, including Marlene Libby as treasurer, Liz Nowers tax collector, and Katrina Oaks as town clerk. And our department heads, Audra?
Department heads, including Parks Department, Beth Ward, Public Works Director, Rick Seibel, Planning and Development Director, Jeremy Martin, Opera House Director, Dave Morrison, Finance Director, Jody Hanson, and Assessing, Harry Leishman.
Do I hear any objections to the consent agenda?
Objection.
Hearing none, they are hereby adopted in total. The sixth item on the agenda is the appointment of a member to the new charter commission. Just so everybody knows, we're establishing a charter commission of nine people. We appointed two, six were elected, are write-ins, and we have one remaining for an appointment. We do have two interested individuals, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with naming them tonight because there's only three of us, and just so everybody knows, and our charter requires, in a meeting like tonight, all three of us have to agree, and that's tough.
But not that we necessarily disagree on the charter commission appointee or...
We never disagree on anything. I just think it'd be smart to table and bring it to the July night.
I see Mrs. Grove in the back.
Is she?
I thought I did.
I didn't see her. No, I didn't see anybody here.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a sense of urgency with this, so I think that...
No, I'd like to get, I think we'd like to get the charter commission going in July, however, if we put it to July 11th, if we agreed to table it, well, they could still have the latter half of the month to schedule the first meeting of the nine total members of the charter commission.
Yeah.
Right, are they really going to meet in July, anyway?
That was, that's the intent, because it is...
That's what John wants, John's ready to work.
That's the intent, yeah. I think we should, I'd recommend tabling it.
Agreed. Second.
All's in favor? Now for the fun part, we have a number of police department commendations. Chief, if you'd like to take the floor, please, it's your show.
Welcome to the most well-protected room in the town of Camden right now.
Oh, you got to turn on your mic there. Say it again.
He said, "Welcome to the most protected room in the town of Camden right now." Well, we have a number of people to be recognized within the police department tonight. Thank you for giving us this time to do it. As you probably all know, we suffered the loss of John Thule retiring to choose a new career path, and I'd like to say a few words. John's a native of Camden and a graduate of Camden Rockport High School. John came to the police department as a patrol officer in May of 2002. Always a calm, cool, professional officer, John easily won the respect of his fellow officers and supervisors. In September of 2011, John was promoted to patrol sergeant. While working full-time, John managed to both work and go to school and obtain a bachelor's degree in nursing in May of this year. Pretty impressive. We all knew John had a desire to follow a new career path, we were just hoping it would be later than sooner. We're all very happy for you, John, and we wish you well in your new endeavor. The law enforcement field is going to lose a good man, but the medical field is going to gain one. I'd like to call John up and present him with this plaque. It's a beautiful plaque, I bet you guys like it. The plaque has John's original patrol sergeant badge that he wore on his shirt. And the reason you put the officer's badge on a plaque is because it's their badge. That badge has a story to tell. A new badge wouldn't have one, so that one has seen the action, so it'll stay with John. It says, "Presented to Sergeant John Thule in the Camden Police Department. An appreciation for your loyal and dedicated service as a patrol sergeant to the Camden Police Department." I hate the leaves, you guys. Thank you. And with John leaving, that opened up a patrol sergeant slot, and we had a competitive process within the department, and Alan Weaver was the officer chosen for the position of sergeant. Alan started with the police department in October of 2003 after serving in the United States Army as a sergeant with the 3rd Infantry Division. During Alan's time with the Army, he was deployed to Iraq as part of Operation Iraqi Freedom. After joining the department, Alan decided he wanted to stay involved with the military, so he joined the 133rd Engineering Unit in Belfast, Maine, as part of the National Guard. Six months after joining the department, Alan was once again called to service with 133rd when they were deployed to Iraq. Alan spent the next year serving a second combat tour in Iraq. Alan, I thank you for your service. Alan has spent a number of years as our training officer within the department, and he is a certified instructor in many disciplines in law enforcement. I'd like to have Alan and his wife, Kim, come up, and Alan will be pinned with his new sergeant's badge tonight by his wife, Kim. Kurt is our detective in the department. Kurt joined us, joined the department in 1995 as a summer foot officer. In October of 96, he became our parking enforcement officer, and in 1998, he became a full-time officer with the department. In 2011, I tasked Kurt with becoming the first-ever detective in the Camden Police Department, after I took over as police chief. Kurt has excelled in this position in investigation, closing our most serious felony and criminal complaints. Kurt's very dedicated and compassionate to what he does, and those cases that he takes that some of us would rather not even look at, he does remarkably well with. He is always making sure that those victims are represented well, and I can't say enough good about the job that he does, and serves us that much better. As he has been working very dedicatedly with this position, I felt that it was time that he go into a supervisory role, and I am going to tonight make Kurt a detective sergeant with the Camden Police Department. One of his roles, which I haven't told him yet, is he will be training all of our officers in criminal investigation. They will start working with him more to develop our next detective down the road. So some of us are getting up there and edge, we'll be retiring, and we want to keep that going, so we have good resources for when we do all decide to retire. Kurt was, last year was awarded a lifesaver award by the Maine Chiefs of Police Association for helping save a young man who'd fallen off his bicycle and would have been fatally injured if it not had been for Kurt Andrick's response, along with Isaiah Bakewell from the fire department. And just two weeks ago, Kurt was awarded the Maine American Legion Maine State Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for 2018. Kurt, I'd like to have you and your wife, Dawn, come up, and she will pin him with the detective sergeant's badge.
Look toward your, toward the camera, it's here, there.
Get a look towards the camera so they can get your picture.
Thank you.
That's it for supervisory, but Scott Entwistle came to our department in July of 2018 as our parking enforcement officer, after serving with the Knox County Regional Communications Center in Rockland. I think you probably worked with Scott, didn't you?
I'm Scott, yes.
Scott's a Camden native and graduated from Camden Hills Regional High School, and Scott has also worked summers when he was a youngster as an assistant harbor master, where he earned his nickname, Sparky, which he still carries today as his moniker. Scott attended Maine Maritime Academy and the Chapman School of Marine Transportation, obtaining 100-ton near-coastal captain's license. Now for the certifications the kid has. Scott's a certified communications officer, certified advanced harbor master, certified animal control officer, and he also has firefighter 1 and 2 training. Scott recently completed the Maine Criminal Justice Academy Reserve Officer Training Program, and now adds that certification to his list of accomplishments. Scott, I'd like you and Haley to step up there. Scott's girlfriend, Haley Nedu, will pin his reserve officer badge. Tonight, I want to recognize our two newest officers who just recently completed the 18-week Maine Criminal Justice Academy program. Paul Thompson joined the Camden Police Department in 2018 as a patrol officer after working in the retail sales field. Mark Bennett joined our department in 2014 as our parking enforcement officer and was promoted to patrol officer in 2018. Both officers recently completed the Maine Criminal Justice Academy's basic law enforcement training program. This is a high-stress 18-week residential program that instructs officers in every aspect of law enforcement. Officers are instructed in areas of criminal and motor vehicle law, juvenile law, liquor laws, search and seizure, mental health, physical fitness, defensive tactics, ethics, use of force, firearms, motor vehicle accident reporting, and emergency vehicle operations, to name a few. Attending the academy is no walk in the park, you need to be committed to do that. Officers are tested on their commitment every day that they are at the academy. They are tested on their ethics, their truthfulness. Now, I lost my place. Completion of the academy is an accomplishment that makes the officer deserving of the badge they are pinned with at the end of 18 weeks. While these 18 weeks are difficult for the officers, we seem to forget those who are left at home to take care of daily life, the spouses. The spouses who are left to take care of children, houses, paying bills, and overcoming everyday problems that arise. And if you can think of something that's going to happen while your spouse is gone, ask these two ladies that I'm going to call up. Everything happens while their spouses are away. They are the support the officers need when they return home late Friday nights and when they leave early Monday morning. To the piles of laundry officers generate after a week at the academy, to the pressing of uniforms, assisting the officers with studying, and trying to spend some quality time on two short days. It's not easy, not one bit. So tonight, we'd like to recognize Officer Paul Thompson and Mark Bennett for graduating from the Maine Criminal Justice Academy. We'd also like to recognize Caitlin Thompson and Molly Bennett for all you endured the 18 weeks, and we'd like to thank you for supporting our officers. Great job, ladies, they couldn't have done it without you. So if I could get Paul and Caitlin and Mark and Molly to step up. Congratulations, congratulations on making the 18 weeks.
Good job, Matt, congrats.
I'd like to thank somebody else. I asked that Jody Hanson step up with you, and I'll give a little, this one didn't make the agenda because she probably wouldn't come, but if you'd step up. Jody helped me put this all together tonight by getting the flowers and all of those nice things, and she's the money lady in town, so you make good friends with her, because that's what you got to do. But Jody needs to be recognized as well, because she also endured the 18 weeks of suffering, while her significant other, Deputy Wannacala, was at the academy and is a classmate of our two officers here. So I gave Wannacala this morning, and he thought it was appropriate to bring Jody some flowers tonight. And I need to do something tonight, and had I told my wife that I was going to do this, she would have never come, so I had to lie just a little.
Uh-oh. Someone's in trouble.
Close the door.
Yeah, she's going to run. I really need to thank the one person who has stood by my side my entire career. What am I doing? The person who's pushed me further than I ever thought I could go, and the person who puts up with sometimes the hectic life of a 24-hour-a-day police officer. It's not an easy job for a spouse, as you spouses will all learn. It's the, you go to the grocery store and somebody's got a complaint, you don't go out to dinner without a phone call. My wife has put up with it for 30 years, and it's taken me 30 years to think, jeez, I got to bring her in and thank her for this. She's the person who makes me look outside the box and not look at issues in one view, makes me take a look at every view on an option or an issue. She's not afraid to tell me when I'm wrong, and she's also not afraid to make me talk on those days when we come back from seeing stuff that we don't want to see. So I have to call my wife up here tonight and thank her for everything she's done for 30 years. The last thing I'll say, I hope it doesn't take as long to get the kitchen floor in and the kitchen painted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
You're free to go. Thank you all for coming.
This is the first time in 30 years?
A dozen. Oh, wait. Hey, basically, police issue comes up Friday night on our 33rd anniversary, does this kind of help out?
Let's break while we're clearing the room.
Ron? All right, thanks for that brief. After that warm, heartwarming moment, maybe we ought to stop now. That was, that was great. I really enjoyed meeting all those people and congratulating them. It's also great for the select board to be able to stand up every few seconds rather than sitting here all night. But our next item on the agenda is that we have a couple of public hearings for a couple of licenses and a permit. So I'm going to go into a public hearing mode. And the public hearing we ask for, the board would like to ask any applicants or public wants to speak to for or against any of these issues. We ask you to identify yourselves and I will identify you. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and your comments. Please keep them brief. When everybody's had a chance to speak, then I will terminate the public portion of the public hearing and we will then revert to select board to the deliberation on the matter. The first matter we have on our agenda tonight is that of a, a public hearing for the liquor license for Martin and Catherine Hobson doing business as The Blackberry Inn at 82 Elm Street for a Class V Bed and Breakfast Liquor License. Is there anyone here would like to speak to for or just about this license? Not seeing any hands, I will then revert to the select board for deliberation on this item.
No comments. Looks like everything's in order.
Motion.
I move that we accept the following liquor license application for Martin and Catherine Hobson doing business as The Blackberry Inn at 82 Elm Street for a Class V Bed and Breakfast Liquor License.
Second.
Those in favor? Unanimous, 3-0. The second is for JM Chen doing business as Camden Island at 87 Elm Street, Suite 106A for a Class 1 Restaurant Liquor License. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak to this license? Not seeing any hands, I'll revert, close the public hearing portion and revert to the select board.
I move that we approve the liquor license application for JM Chen doing business as Camden Island at 87 Elm Street, Suite 106A for a Class 1 Restaurant Liquor License.
Second.
A favor? Unanimous, 3-0. Lastly is the Camden Waterfront doing business as Hawkspill at 5 Bayview Landing for a special amusement permit. Anybody from the public who would like to speak to this one for against? No. Not seeing any hands, I'll close the public hearing and revert to the select board.
Can we just hear what they're doing?
We will after.
Well, I like to hear and then vote, rather than...
Okay, all right. If you want anybody to come up and say something, that's fine.
I mean, I'm not against...
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm not against it.
No, no, we want you to, trust me. It's just a question of whether we do it now or after we approve it. We'll do it now.
Generally, it's better to have information before you vote, just in case he does say something that would, you know...
My name is Matt and I am the owner of the business that you're referring to.
That's appropriate.
Want to tell us about your special...
Oh yeah, I'm just looking to have some live music down there once in a while on the waterfront. I think we only have one thing booked as of right now anyways. So maybe on the patio once in a while during the day on a Sunday afternoon, something like that. We're not looking to have a rock concert down there or anything.
While you're here, why don't you tell us about your hours of operation?
So we open at 11:30 for lunch and we close, dinner service is done by nine and I can't remember many times where we were open past 10 o'clock last year. I mean, you know, my landlords own hotels around me as well, so I can't be too loud too late.
Of course.
Yeah, so we were thinking like mid-afternoon or around, you know, 5, 6 o'clock at night, have somebody out there doing some acoustic stuff or, you know, Chris Ross or something like that.
Sure, sure, good. Did you give your name up front I didn't remember?
Yeah, it's Matt Haskell.
I think you said it, I just want to make sure everybody understands that till we get into the meeting minutes. Cool, well, thanks for coming. Do you have anything to say for against your license?
No, I mean, I look forward to it, it'll be fun, I think, yeah.
So the way it stands now, they're not allowed to have any, a business can't have music or something like that out on the patio with, unless they have this kind of a special amusement permit.
Special amusement, even for internal?
Yeah, inside and outside, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So live music is the threshold for that or...
Uh, I believe.
You can obviously play the radio without...
Yeah, I think in order to do like a dance license, you have to go through the state fire marshal's office and all that. We're not doing that, we're just looking for just somebody to play some acoustic music out, out in the afternoons or whatever.
Well, good, it'll be fun.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
So with that, I will close the public hearing and discussion and revert to the select board for action.
I move that we approve the application for the Camden Waterfront doing business as Hawkspill at 5 Bayview Landing for a special amusement permit.
Second.
Those in favor? At this point, I'll conclude all public hearing and revert back to our agenda, which would next, I'd want the agenda would be a work plan update by the pathways committee.
Really?
Uh-huh. I didn't think you were going to make it tonight, Jeff. Yeah, I didn't see you.
Can we plug in?
Yeah.
Sure.
Can I just want to show you pictures?
You can just unplug the...
Apple TV.
Yeah. Yep, if that'll go into your, do you have an HDMI port?
On my old one.
Yep. We have a few different adapters too.
That was lucky.
Yeah, it's a nice blank page.
Yeah, great work, Jeff.
I need a drum roll. I'm Jeff Scott, I'm the chair of the pathways committee, just to get that out of the way. This is a proposal we have for the, down by Hannaford.
I like it, actually.
Yeah? It's good. Is that okay, Audra?
Very futuristic.
It's good, all right, great. We're still working on the suspension a little bit, but I think we'll be there. Basically, I'm just trying to lighten it up a little bit.
It's about to get heavy.
Just creating the same foundation for all of us. We were formed in 2000, 10 members, six alternates, three from each town, three alternates from each town, five members from each town. We usually are light one or two alternates, but we're pretty consistent. And we meet with both select boards. We're now 19-years-old as a committee and we manage specific projects, enhance bike, pedestrian transportation. We've developed and maintained a master plan and we work cooperatively with other organizations. And what we're doing here is updating this work plan, which you're familiar with. The select board asked us to do these and that's what we're updating. It's a little hard to read, don't worry, I'm not going to have you read it. The, the items that we'll go through are the Riverwalk, Route 1 North rebuild, the Maritime Farms project, Washington Street Camden Downtown Master Plan, pave rounds and sidewalk maintenance, which sidewalk maintenance, Ross and Abbey Bridge and bike awareness are not on the original work plan, but it's a moving target. So just adding a few items to the end. So jumping right in, the Riverwalk, sorry, I can't help you back in the back a little bit more, but the Riverwalk goes from town, the vision is it'll go from town out to Shertail. And that squiggly line that you see there, there's different colors, there's colors that are completed, ones that are in progress, et cetera. Down at the bottom there, you sort of see that light green bracket, that's the project we're currently working on, which is down by the old skateboard park, down by the teen center.
Is that true?
I don't think it's as good, I'd rather use yours.
Here, Jeff. Use this.
Yeah, yours is better. Yeah.
Sure. There's a button on the side, Jeff.
Yep. So it's this section right here that's currently working on. We've completed this section, the Tannery Park section, and this part, the Seabright Park section. And each, each section in here is, has various challenges, easements, things like that. We hope to get them done as, as things move along. And that, what we'll do is first talk a little bit about the lower section, which is here. That's the middle school, there's the teen center, and it's this section right here that we're working on. The town has done some striping, which is great. I don't know if you've seen that on the parking lot. That's pretty cool.
I have, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah, and there's already skateboarders writing on it. So that's pretty cool. The, the builder Dan Ford is moving some, some larger rocks in there for building up the edges and he's laid some one-inch minus down. And he's gotten just about to that back bank there by the skateboard park, that's where he's finished. He's roughed this in and none of the work, the harder work down near the shoreline setback has been done, back behind the Lions Club. And that's where we're working on. We were held up because there was concern about a blue heron colony. That, that concern has gone away. The fishing, fishing wildlife, no.
Inland fishing.
Inland fishing, inland fisheries and wildlife. IFNW, yeah. They changed their mind and felt that there was no heron colony there, me there. So Dan Ford will start working in the next couple of weeks and build, do some more work, which is pretty cool. And I want to thank the town also and the community for supporting the concept of this parking lot. It, it adds parking spaces down in town, but it also works, makes a wonderful trailhead for the, the Riverwalk, that long couple-mile travel. So that's a great concept, double, double win on that one. The work that we're doing down here, which is from here, you can barely see it, I might have a better slide here. Yeah, that's that same bracket right there. You can see this is the Lions Club property right there. So we're building this section right in here, but the RTP grant that we've received actually has some remaining monies. But the original plan was not to do this, but they've allowed, the main, MDOT has allowed us to use additional monies to extend the, to extend the path if we can. Right in here, this section right here is, is wetlands. And that, that presents a challenge, but it's not insurmountable. I spoke to DEP and DEP is fine with us constructing in there. We just need to get a permit, which they, they give all the time for, in wetlands, and we have to get the Army Corps to look at it. And it would take about three or four months, so it's possible that we could do that before December 31st when we lose the monies.
Hold on, what, what do they suggest we construct the Riverwalk out of there?
Boardwalk.
Wood boardwalk?
Well, boardwalk, I didn't get to that detail. We just said boardwalk. No, they just said boardwalk, that's all. They, they build boardwalk in other sections. She talked about the section up in Bangor, there's a big Orano wetland that they built across, you can see examples there, and there's one up in Orano as well. But they, they, she said specifically, we approve these in different parts of the state all the time. And I asked her whether she would come down or whether the Army Corps should see it first. She said, well, we can't really approve it until site plan is done and we can see what you plan to do. So it may not go, I don't know, but it's, it's still a possibility. And I hope to work on it.
Hold on, what zone is that in? What's the zoning?
That's, that's a good question, and we will talk about that because...
Do you agree with that question?
The question was, what about the zoning? And I'll get to that in a sec, all right? Because I have a zoning...
Okay.
I have a zoning, zoning map that I should bring up.
Yep.
Uh, let's see.
It's the BCR, I think.
Yeah, actually, I think it's the, I think it's this one. Yeah, so there's, there, there's the Lions Club, that little funny shaped thing.
Yeah.
And this yellow that turns to pink, that's the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant is actually split between two districts, Business Transition and Village. The pink is Village. So the section we're thinking of building in is actually still Business Transition, the same as the section we're building in now. So the setback is fine. We're interested in the different districts, and Allison, you're spot on in asking that question, because if we went to Village, the setback is 75 feet. And that would make it impossible for us to construct in here because of the buildings that are there. So there's another close-up. You can see there's, you can't, it's, no, this is what I did, the close of the map, but the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant is here, and then the idea is that we would build the path right along here. But if we had a 75-foot setback, we would be building it right up here in these buildings here, which would be a problem because there's roads and parking lot and all kinds of things up there. So one of the things that, that we are doing as a committee is we're, we put a, submitted an application to the planning board to consider making the wastewater treatment property one, in one zone. Because right now, half the wastewater treatment plant is in Village, which doesn't really make...
The whole thing should have been, even the school property.
Even the school property.
It's like if they'd just done it then, it wouldn't have cleared up all their height problems, right?
Yeah, yeah. So that application is in and it's not, we have time for that to occur because we don't, we don't have enough money to go up to this point anyway where that transition line is.
So it's, no, your turn.
If, if, if that happens and then, and that does become Business Transition, once you get around the bend into Village eventually, are you...
It should be right here, the end of the...
Are you out of the room for a 75-foot setback?
That's a really good question, and let me...
I just wonder if it's going to be a problem all the way up there, wherever.
It is a problem in every, in every section and, not that I foresaw that question, but here's the, here's the whole section. So here's Seabright and, and here are the various zones and the key is really, the legend is really small, but pink is Village, that's a problem. Anytime you see B, that's a business, that's good. So we got lucky at the Tannery, we were in business, Seabright, we were in business, down here, we were in business, those are all 25-foot setbacks. It's the Village that's the problem, which is also the reason we went to Augusta, and thanks very much for Jeremy, for all his efforts to try to get that, to try to get some kind of new legislation to allow towns to build in their village districts. And, and we didn't get that. However, we did...
A pathway.
A pathway, not build, sorry, a pathway that has a 25-foot setback. Right now, it's a 75-foot setback. And so, which is the same as building around Moosehead, you know, or around McGunna Cook, Lake McGunna Cook, or in the rural areas.
Well, it deserves just as much protection, the river deserves just as much protection as the, I mean, there's a, I have a few questions when you're, when it's a good...
Yeah, hang on, did I want to say one more thing?
Because the first thing is the application to change the zoning of a town-owned property...
No, it wasn't, I, the, we're not changing the zoning, we're changing the shoreline zoning setback in the Village District.
No, no, yeah, that I also have, that's a whole different situation. But going back to the application to the planning board to change the zoning of the wastewater treatment plant?
To change this, this section of the property, that little pink piece...
Right, I think I understand.
From BTR, sorry, from Village to BTR.
So it's my understanding that the only, the only person or the only entity that can request a zoning, a zone map change is the property owner.
Oh, that's us.
So I, I don't, but it's not the, it's not the Camden Rockr Pathways Committee.
No, no, it's, it's the town.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, that's the town. And I talked to David Bolstrich and he thinks he wants it to...
Well, he doesn't own it either.
I know he doesn't own it either, but he, sure, so I don't know what the process is.
But that's the kind of thing, that, I mean, we can't just have committees just requesting zoning changes of... zoning changes of, I mean, you can recommend.
How do you suggest, who do you suggest we recommend that to?
Probably the Select Board, and I mean, I think...
The Pathways would like to recommend that we change, we'd like to change that.
They'll put it on an action list.
Because that's, I mean, there's a reason why these shoreline zoning protections exist.
That's not a shoreline zone. Oh, sorry. It does, the shoreline zone would still occur there, but the setback would be from 75 feet to 25 feet because of...
There's a reason...
It's just for pathways, just for a six-foot wide travel.
I get it, but there's a, so we're talking about two different issues. There's the issue of just the town property and how we treat our resources. And then there's the larger issue of the state law and trying to get that changed. So I think there are issues at both levels that just because it's the town building a path doesn't mean that it's going to be good for the environment or not detrimental to the environment.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So having spent just a lot of time back there, I mean, there's an, that poor river has just been abused and the erosion and the sediment and the, so I think, I was really apprehensive about when I heard that, you know, the town of Camden or the committee or whatever was trying to get a state law changed because...
Amended.
Right. So that, I mean, a lot of the time, these pathways, they end up being, you know, what we're envisioning may or may not be okay, but it's definitely not okay when you get up into these other parts of the state and you have people on four-wheelers going through these paths. And there's a huge, I don't think we should be insensitive to the huge gains that have been made through the laws that protect the water bodies.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's what the, despite, despite us saying that this is in the Village District in a business area, connecting business zones like this, the Natural Resource, Environment and Natural Resources Committee said the same thing you did. They denied it because they were worried about ramifications throughout the rest of the state.
Correct.
It was a little frustrating because we weren't saying doing it for the whole state. We were saying, actually, we were constraining it to, what was the word, Anita?
Public-private partnerships.
No. No, it wasn't. It had to do with the definition of...
Right now, it's been rejected. We're not going to revisit it now, but we will put on action list the issue about the zoning that's been brought up and how is the correct procedure. Make sure we have it correct, and we'll take that as an action item.
There is one other thing that you should be aware of, and that is that the DEP, who is also at the hearing, the committee felt that the shoreline zones, as they applied in towns, were antiquated and need to be looked at again.
Sure.
So the DEP is going to look at that.
Good.
And come up with something in fall or next year, to come up with something to bring back.
It's surprising to me that we can just change a zone of something and then have it be...
We're going to clarify that.
Different, it's, I'm...
I understand.
I want the River Walk to succeed.
I think that's what they meant, is that antiquated component of it.
Antiquated component of it. Not, they're very interested in protecting shoreline zone throughout the state, as am I.
Understandable.
Very much. So, moving on, we're up to Route 1 North. Not much action, as you're aware of, on the Route 1 North.
Well, where it's at now is all the owners have received letters from MDOT that their properties for the right-of-way are being evaluated right now and that it's, and that they'll be meeting with all the homeowners. They intend to bid the project next spring.
Correct. And this is, what you see here is a cross-section of a typical section of what that's going to look like. So you can see there's 11-foot travelway, five-foot shoulder, and then some kind of a...
Slope to drain.
Slope to drain. And the committee continues to advocate for this five-foot shoulder, plus or minus, depending on conditions.
That is the current design.
And that's the current design.
Can we go back to the River Walk for a second and talk about the, that town-owned property that we got the letter about, that the possible connector?
Oh.
I wanted to better understand what the value that you see in that property to make sure that we don't...
Shoot, I think I forgot about that.
Good.
Oh, my goodness. I think I totally left that off. It's right here.
We can see it.
It's right here. This is, here's the school.
Yeah.
And then we're proposing that we cross here because of the amount of wetland in here.
Yeah, that's the whole wetland, that...
Yeah, it's different. There's a wet, there's a wet area here, but this is all dry. Anyway, so we thought it would be easier going up this side. This is the property currently owned by the town on Ross and Ave.
Is that where the CMP, for the power?
There's a pump station...
Have you ever tried to walk back there?
Yeah.
It's more wetland than the other side.
I didn't, well, here's the property that we would like to build a spur to and which is also in the, gosh, I completely missed that. I'm sorry, I had another drawing for that, too. This is also in the master plan for the River Walk. They talk about a connection to Ross and Ave. And then the idea is here, we would use the bridge on Ross and Ave. But this property, this is the pump station where that funny building is. There's a little thing. And then there's one property with a trailer. And then this is an empty property. And so you guys, the town is looking at your inventory, and that's the property right there. And we were hoping to come up with a spur through there. Mentioned it to Jeremy, and he said, "Well, let's just put an easement on it before we sell it that says, 'Hey, if it ever happens, we can put it through there.'"
Yeah, I think it's questionable whether we'd want to develop that anyway, but, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for reminding me about that, Allison.
Jeff, can I ask you a question about that? I know you have...
Ray, Ray, we're not going to have a conversation. You have to come up here and ask a question if you want. Please come up.
This one?
Please.
Just a quick question.
Ray and Grayson, and I know you have Ross and Avenue Bridge on there later on, but all these maps are showing, if you do that, that the eventual thing is to have people walking across the Ross and Avenue Bridge. And I thought that was a no-no.
Oh, we're working on that. I think it's, I still walk on it.
Working on it. Yeah, and there's an alternate way to come up on this side, too, so...
We need that bridge to be there. I mean, at least a pedestrian bridge. I think everybody's...
Let's get to that one on the agenda.
That's just my opinion.
So there's Route 1 North. Moving on, updating you on, this is Maritime Farms. This is the project that starts at Corey Hill, comes down on that side of the street. It's a sidewalk and comes all the way down here, not to Leonard's, but to...
Oh.
Biscuits.
Loyal Biscuit.
Yeah, Loyal Biscuit.
That's going to be so great.
Loyal Biscuits, yeah. So it's a whole, so this, as you remember probably, the grant was in 2012 that we got this, so this has been pending. This is just a very general overview. Site plan's all done, design's all done, everything's done. We are just waiting to go out to bid in the fall jointly with the Washington Street Extension Project. The idea, and this is the Washington Street Extension, which is from Matthew John up to Shertail. The idea is that if we combine the two projects, perhaps they will come in at budget. That's what we're hoping. Is there any wood here?
Yeah, there's some right here. Fake wood. There's wood.
That is so, thank you. It'll be so exciting when that finally happens.
That would be so exciting.
And thank you for sticking with it and...
I'm burning incense every night, but I don't know if it's helping.
We have Romanian students here for the summer, and so I'm constantly picking them up at the bus station. And sometimes they're, you know, you see others that don't have a host family that's actually picking them up and they're trying to...
And they're walking up the side.
Walking along, and it's just, yeah, such a logical place.
And this is beautiful. I forgot to mention, right here, they're going to widen the road, too.
Yep.
So that there's a shoulder for cyclists.
Yep.
That's the plan.
Did anything ever come of the, you know, for years, we've sort of bounced around that idea of changing Camden Road?
Camden Road is also part of the change. They are narrowing this distance.
Go through that field.
No, we're not, that's too big. Beyond the scope.
Okay.
Beyond the scope. But they're narrowing this crossing so it doesn't take so long for pedestrians to cross. And they're ninety-ing it up just a smidge.
It's so dangerous there, even for just cars.
It'll be better if they can do it, yeah, if they pull it off. It'll be better, but it's not the best. The best was the first picture.
Mm-hmm.
Best.
Skyways.
The skyways.
That'd be helpful there, too.
That would be helpful. That's what I said, that's where it is. Okay.
Thank you.
Another project is, well, that's the wrong name here. But this is the downtown project that may start next year, I think. You guys were there, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It could start at the same time as Route 1 North.
Yeah, two years, maybe. So the project is, they're working on the drainage here, they're working on the drainage up here, and we're going to get out of it some sidewalk improvement along the edge of it because of the drainage. And that was brilliant to combine the two. Call her, Bill. Ms. Town Manager.
Pushing for street trees, right, maybe?
Correct.
Yeah, we would like to at least accommodate some kind of cut or something so that at later time, because if they pave it completely over, yeah, one of our members, Andrew Stanchoff, was trying to bring that up.
Right.
I think that they said it might not be too hard.
I don't think that would be difficult to do at all.
And we could, we could...
No, it's just, it's just a box.
It's just a square. It's just a box, yeah. And then we can figure out how to make it good.
I mean, they were completely amenable to the idea of doing that, so...
They're bidding this in the spring of next year, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, we need to let them know soon exactly where we'd like them located.
Well, the master plan, the downtown master plan has them sort of...
Well, I mean, you know, there's...
Tighten it up?
We have to look at kind of the difference between what was in the master plan versus what's feasible from an engineering perspective, and then kind of get the closest approximation of what we can.
And I want shade trees, not just the little ones.
The ones?
You'd have to work with the MDOT's landscape architect.
Should we look at, should we, the Pathways Committee?
Yeah, we need to figure out like what the next step is for that because...
Yeah, what's the next step?
Typically, it would be the work, instead of meeting with the MDOT and the landscape architect.
Oh, well, let's have maybe, if we could have, because they also said at this point they want, DOT wants sort of one, they don't want to be...
Point of contact.
Workshopping it. So if one of a committee submitted recommendations to the, to you, that could be...
And Rick.
And Rick. But then can, I would like, how do, how do we get involved if...
You see the plans?
Yeah, but then I, I'd love to know your thoughts on where some street trees could go, should go.
Happy to share that. I'll bring it up at the next meeting, and then we'll move forward on it.
I think we're...
And we'll give you a recommendation, and you guys can look at it.
Also, there's going to be what's technically possible, given the fact that you've got all this infrastructure that's going to be right near it and above it and what's going to fit in a box that...
And what can grow in a box.
Right, and what can grow.
The whole root system has to be in a box?
Yeah.
Well, it has to be below the sidewalk.
And what the budget is sustaining.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying, I just want to curb the expectation that we're going to have big street trees. I mean, big shade trees. It might be a little bit more modest.
Maybe we want big shade trees, but...
But we'll see.
Why can't, okay.
We'll see.
Their root system can't go into like the Village Green and stuff, or?
It has to be below the sidewalk.
Because it's going to be, yeah.
Deep, so if it's the kind of root system that lifts the sidewalk, that's a bad thing. A lot of trees do that, so we'll look into it, though.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look into other ideas.
If it is possible.
Other people have figured this out.
Thank you.
We're going to get it.
We should look at some historical pictures of Camden. It was figured out pretty well before.
The next topic is pave rounds.
Oh, yeah.
And this is just an example, a couple of examples. Rick built, this is down on Belmont, did a great job. You can see what was done was, the sidewalk went just like this. And Rick, the right-of-way goes back, and he spoke to the property owners, and they said, "Yeah, sure, cut it away," which also allows the plow to go around, not to mention scooters, mobile scooters and wheelchairs.
Sure.
And without that, it's just a little bit of asphalt. See that?
Yeah.
Without it, it's just too narrow, but it just makes everything a lot better. And you know what? It makes it kind of neater because the sidewalk kind of winds down. The trick is, you have, it's nice to have the landowner say, "Yeah, that's a good thing." And Rick has said that it's in his budget next year and that...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And there's about 40, 40 telephone poles around town.
So why are we moving, why aren't we moving faster on that particular thing? Is it because we're being really sensitive to the property owners, or is it because of funding?
I don't know the answer to that.
I guess I'm looking at Rick.
However, let me go down, no, no, I'll go to that. We'll just, we'll stick here. One of the questions is process, and later in the agenda towards the end, I would like to ask that question, is how does this work? How, what's our role? What's the process? What's the pathways do? In some ways, it seems like it's taken a long time. But I look back in my notes, and the first list I sent to Rick was in the fall, late in the fall of 2017, which was last budget cycle. And Rick tried to get it in there, and I think he didn't, and it just was so busy last year, and so he's putting in this year. So we're only one year behind, in essence. It seems like it's been around for a while.
Yeah.
But you built these, I think, in 2017 in the summer, just before, and I took these in the winter of 2018.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We are starting, and you haven't really heard about this, but trying to create a greater bike awareness in town. We're not sure exactly what that means, but we're feeling right now it'll just be signage. And we have some leads on free signage. So all we have to do is put them up. But where to put them up and things like that is a question, and we're going to come up with a plan. Hang on just a second. And I, there is a, there's sort of a guide here that we are going to move to, we think. It's one of these, people have been here before, the Bicycle Coalition of Maine has toyed with this concept called a complete street. And a complete street is one that safely accommodates the needs of all street users, pedestrians, wheelchair users, bicyclists, transit users and car drivers. So cities and town, there's about 10 towns and cities in Maine right now that have adopted and created sort of this vision charter thing that says, we are going to look at complete streets when we are looking at building things. And I think Camden does that already, but it would be nice to have it down in black and white to say, hey, this is how we approach things. And we'll be coming to you with that and also Rick will be talking to you about what makes sense and where we can put mostly these kind of roads, like these kind of signs, state law, three feet minimum pass.
On state roads only.
That's only on state roads? Oh, that's a state law.
Yeah.
Yeah, but these kind of things.
We have major roads throughout towns, not state.
Yeah, but the big ones, the mountain and Washington, those are good ones.
The state.
So we can, can we put a sign on those?
Not without state's permission, but you can certainly propose it.
So one of the things that was talked about, this was a huge topic of the Build Maine Conference.
Build Maine?
And, oh, you weren't here for the beginning when we talked about it, but what was his name? Jeff Speck?
Jeff Speck.
So there was just a fantastic speaker who has written all kinds of books.
It's all walkability, bikeability.
It's all about.
Speck, I know another Jeff, but it's not Speck.
I mean, he's, I think he's borderline famous.
From DC.
And he's famous.
Famous, not borderline famous. What's this book called?
The Death of the American City.
And there are a bunch more.
That's very optimistic.
And there's all, like the handbook for, well, the point being that he really advocated for right of way, just painting lines on, painting in bike lanes in many different streets and that it's a, like this no cost way basically of just experimenting with different things. And we talked about, we had a couple of streets, actually. Ethan Shaw, one of the planning board members, was saying, well, what if we painted.
Lime Rock to.
And Culquard and, and he had a whole plan.
So we're going to come up with that list. We're riding around town and we're looking at where it is possible and where the challenges are. And then we have to talk to Rick because there's wits and all kinds of things that come into play and.
I think sometimes, it was this, really advocated for like less of all the fussiness and more experimenting. We try, we paint the lines, we try, we see how it goes. There seems to be a lot of resistance to signage in this town and that that turns.
In most states.
I mean, I personally don't.
In most states, it's a lot of resistance to signage.
But this idea of just like painting the streets seemed appealing and it would be worth actually going back maybe and looking at his presentation so you can see what the whole planning board and select board and all of us were exposed to.
Would the select board be open to budgeting paint each year for that paint job?
Well.
Yeah.
Obviously.
How much is the paint?
It depends on the amount, of course, but, and it goes, has to go through the whole budgeting process.
Oh, no.
It has to go through the budgeting process.
We can start doing some painting right away, though. We'll find money for paint.
I agree, but your signage thing, there's three levels. You've got local, Rick knows that best, state, Rick knows that also, and federal. There's three different levels in our town. You have to deal with the signage, makes it kind of complicated. So, so the procedure, you really need to get that clearly defined to see what has to happen.
Well, it's just, this is just, we're just moving on this.
Let's just paint the roads.
I like the idea of painting the roads and of course, the Pathways Committee has no money, so we don't have.
Understandable.
Money, I think, to paint lines on the roads.
A lot of, a lot of this was, that we talked about where it's sort of like demonstration projects to kind of test certain areas.
So you're not doing the whole town, you're doing a couple of streets and seeing what happens.
And a lot of it, it was, you had volunteers painting with impermanent paint just to see if it's going to work for a few days or however long, so.
Right, this whole tactical, they called it tactical urbanism.
Yeah.
And we did that, too. We've done it in our town as well. That's how we.
We'll check it out.
Yeah, we will.
You should just go for, just like ask.
Test it out.
Yeah, just start painting and.
We got it. All right. I just want to make it clear, you've just asked the Pathways Committee to spray paint the roads and I really like that idea.
I think just coming in with, it's kind of like that, just come in and say.
I was just trying to summarize, synthesize it. No, I'm just kidding.
I mean, sort of, they, I brought in a proposal and I got to paint the storm drains and it wasn't that hard, just say, this is the color I'd like to use and this is the road and.
So we've talked all the way down to here, down to bike awareness. There's the Rossin Avenue Bridge.
Right.
The two items that we haven't spoken about in sidewalk maintenance, although we've touched on it. The Pathways Committee, and we understand your position, we just need to formally say that we would like it somehow to maintain.
It was a good statement.
Pedestrian bike.
It was a good statement, thank you.
And that's what the memo was and we just want to affirm that, that.
Jeff, could you state that?
We would like to maintain bicycle and pedestrian access across.
Right.
McGonacook Creek, a river.
McGonacook Creek. Just constantly getting downgraded.
Understood, understood.
At Rossin Avenue, and that's what the point is.
And I, it would, I think it would be nice for the Pathways Committee to take a position on whether it should be pedestrian and bike only.
Well, I was going to ask, one of the questions I had for the select board was, we don't have a solution. We just sort of made a statement, but do you want us to look at alternatives?
That's what I found to be kind of annoying because it was.
Do you want us to look at that?
We're in a bit of a conundrum because.
Oh, yeah.
We have an MDOT report that says, at this moment in time, it's technically closed everything, right?
Correct.
Technically, so, and, but they say until it is demolished or replaced.
Correct.
So we have to put some flesh on the bone of what that might mean. It's a chunk of change either way, that has to be looked at. So before we start, because we have developed some concepts that I know Gertlie Dorsky worked on for both pedestrian as well as pedestrian only.
No, they didn't do pedestrian.
They did.
No, not pedestrian only.
That's right, it was a walk, it was a roadway only, but we could take a look at that, but it's kind of a chicken and egg thing right now.
It is, and so what we're offering, the Pathways Committee is offering, if you want us to start looking at the costs and coming up with something and, and not making any decisions, but scratching our head.
Understood, understood. I think it's imminent, but I think we have to get some feedback more formally from MDOT because right now they're refusing to fund anything, as I understand it. And the town funding, whatever it might be, it's going to be in the sixth figures at least.
Yes.
Six figures kind of thing to do anything.
At least, at least.
I don't quite agree with that, but we have to look at it.
I, if they, I think with the bridge, and I'm probably wrong, but if they really believed it were a danger to, there's got to be another category up of like dangerous bridges that they remove. If they really believed it was going to crumble and fall into the river, then they need to get it out right away. But it's not in that level, it's in the, it can just sit there level. So I feel like we didn't really even push back and say, well, hold on, I get technically that you don't want to endorse it, but can, what would we have to do to get it, you know, if we have, you know, have Carmen, our own engineer.
That's the next discussion we have to have with MDOT, I agree with you. Right now, they're just taking the position that it's unsafe. That's simply stated, it's unsafe. And that's what engineers do. They don't have gradations of unsafe.
Hmm, well.
They don't have gradations of unsafe.
They must because they should be out then because it's a danger to the river then.
No, they believe right now it's legally closed to all pedestrian traffic and all highway traffic. That's what this report says, closed.
I get that, but.
So therefore their liability is covered. Somebody's walking over and the thing, it's not going to collapse, collapses, they're covered.
Well, they're not covered if it goes in the river.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, they are. It's closed to, it's closed to all transport period.
If it's actually in danger of falling, then it poses an environmental hazard as well.
They, they don't, they don't, yes.
And they do, they do factor that in, that's why they, that's why they sometimes re actually remove bridges.
We have to have a discussion with MDOT to see what the next steps are to either demolish or replace, that's what the report says. It's actions upon between us, between MDOT and us to determine the next steps.
There are bridges that they have historically been, like MDOT bridges, that have been, become pedestrian only, like railcar things and.
Sure, sure.
There might be a process for that.
There might be, but we get to talk with MDOT about it.
Are we scheduled to talk to them?
No, I don't think we have anything said at the moment.
No.
Because they kind of closed the door halfway on us already, but we have to resurrect, we'll see whether there's any.
Well, and I mean, I think it's more about the fact that when we started this discussion, it was kind of under one.
Yes.
Structure and they've changed.
Department structures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe an opening.
And the guy who we were speaking with retired, but I mean, that doesn't, like, now's as good a time as any to start talking to them again.
We should be doing this summer.
Yeah.
So we is the select board or the town, Audra or Rick or?
We'll reach out to the, what's that department, like bridges and, bridges and what, whatever they are that.
Bridges and.
I forget. Yeah, but we'll reach out to them again and start talking about what we're going to do with this. Because really what they were most interested in when we were speaking to them was us funding half of the cost of replacing it as is.
Right.
We didn't really talk to them at all about, you know, replacing it with a pedestrian bridge or just closing it off to cars and allowing just pedestrians and cyclists.
That's correct, that's correct. And we have to get them to mod, to do that to modify the reporters written.
Right.
Maybe I will do that.
But it wouldn't hurt for the Pathways Committee with all of the river crossing that may need to happen, it wouldn't hurt for, I would think, for you to have a little bit more knowledge about options for pedestrian bridges and.
We have, we have, because of the River Walk, we have looked at a lot of bridges and we do have sort of those ideas, but.
We'll.
But this is a special case.
It is. We'll resurrect with MDOT then proceed with, talking with you two.
We'll check in every once in a while on that. The last item I have is, is sort of sidewalk maintenance, which is a question of roles, responsibility and process on this. And it, you know, our liaison is, we meet with Rick and, and Public Works, Public Works does a great job of picking off various projects and dealing with all the pressures from people asking Rick all the time that they need to fix something, Public Works has to fix something now. And Rick's doing, he's continuously juggling the demands of the community to fix things. So in the past few years, just to remind folks, Mountain Street, Rick did some rework on Mountain Street. He repaved some stuff there. On Union Street, you repaired. On Mechanic Street, you did some repaving down on Mechanic Street, too. And in next year, he's extending Pearl Street Sidewalk along with that project there. So there's lots of stuff going on, just doing great work. Pathways, in the meantime, we do a sidewalk survey about every five years and we meet with Rick, hopefully every fall before he does his budget, to ask him to take into consideration the priorities of the sidewalk survey and where we think needs to.
I see.
On the maintenance side of things. But that's sort of about it, you know, and it's sort of the pave around question and then, and then, and then Rick has to deal with salt and cost of asphalt and all that kind of stuff. And I don't know if we should make it more public or, meaning, here's, here's the plan, here's what we're hoping to get to, we may not get to it now, but we're going to get to it, or. It kind of bears on that question that came up at the town meeting when the guy asked about drainage, I think. It's like, where's the master plan? And I said, yeah, that's kind of like that. So I don't know, it just doesn't feel like it's solid. And maybe not now, I'm not asking you to solve this, but a process whereby it's more formalized in terms of, you know, if Rick says, you know, it's in the budget this year, it's in, I'm going to work on pave arounds, do, does the Pathways Committee say, hey, Rick, once a week, how's it going, how's it going, how's it going? Or do we just say, you know, Rick's got it?
Okay.
That's the question.
Also, it comes down to like whether, whether do we, sometimes if, do we need to allocate more money? Like, there has to be some back and forth with the select board, too, so that if.
That's exactly right.
Of course, Rick hears from people all the time that want, have their own little things that they want, whatever. And at some point, it has to turn into a directive, like, okay, we want to double the public works budget and accomplish whatever or.
It's true, there's that part of it as well.
Yeah.
And so where is it? And so it's, this, I've been carrying on for quite a while here, so I'd like to bring it up and we can talk about it maybe offline.
Well, a great idea, because if you don't have a plan, you don't get anything done.
Right.
Like, I don't even know where, I know there's this document about sidewalk priorities and all of that, but.
There's a sidewalk survey and then there's a priority document.
I feel like.
Which is generated by the sidewalk.
Aren't they both old?
They're all, well, not the priority, the priority's updated all the time.
Okay.
But the survey is old, it's about six, seven years old now and we're ready to do another one and the committee said, why should we do another one? When we don't have a process, so.
Do you have that all public somewhere, too, so that people can weigh in and?
I think, yeah.
I'm sure, it's not like it's hidden, but it's one of those things that's like not.
It's the pothole thing, the, we, that, that software.
Pothole.
Oh, the RSMS?
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
It's a cool thing. It's a way, it's an online system to report issues.
Oh, like in Rockland?
Oh, no, no, the report it, fix it.
Report it, fix it.
Gosh, thank God.
MDOT did that, like two years and stopped it.
Well, I think Rockland still does it.
And Rockport.
And Rockport, too.
Oh, right. How's it going in Rock?
That's a great idea in terms of.
I think it's fine.
We should check it out. Yeah, I agree.
Rockport really used it, they really focused on streetlights.
Right.
That were out.
Our new website provider, too, is all.
They, I think they have a.
They were pushing that when we were, when we were talking to them and, and we were all like, oh my, you know, that sounds very scary. And they were talking about all the different ways it can be used and.
About the sidewalk maintenance.
Thanks.
Jeff, the, well, the Pathway Committee has given me the, they went around and helped a lot, you know, identifying a lot of issues on sidewalks and everything, which is very helpful. Like I said, it's a little antiquated, a lot of the stuff has been done, some stuff is just gone away, we've replaced a whole sidewalk in these other spots. And so a lot of that's been taken care of. It's not always a matter or an issue of money, it's an issue of time and it's not the only thing I have to do. There's a lot of other work and, and you have to have the weather for it. I mean, to go get hot mixed asphalt and to go do this work takes time, takes good weather and when we have all these other things to do, not enough people to do it, it doesn't get done.
Yeah.
As timely as you want it to. I mean, every winter, we have, we destroy sidewalks in places. Private plow, people destroy the sidewalks, the driveways going in. We do a lot of that maintenance in the spring. We haven't had much weather right now. Today's the first day we got some hot mixed asphalt to do some work. We have people's driveways, we have water issues.
Yep.
That we're dealing with and that are, a lot of that's to do with driveways and sidewalks and the edges of the road. So we, we pick away at that stuff and of course, the things that are the worst are the ones that are getting attention first. So some things that aren't as bad may go to the back burner because there's so many of these new things that come up.
And worse to that effect, usually what happens here is my bad front yard is bad to me, but somebody else's bad front yard is bad to them. Prior, to Jeff's point, prioritization is a bear.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I prioritize, you know, I go by after I check it out, look it over and.
Sure.
See what needs to be done and so.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's more of a process that we do. I mean, I know, I'm out there all the time, I walk the sidewalks, I ride my bike around town, I see a lot of things.
I agree.
I know about them. What they do, just puts it all down on a spreadsheet for me and I have it, you know, to, to check out, so. It's, you know, we just keep pecking away at it and it's even hard to get private contractors now to do anything.
It's going to get worse.
They're so busy. I had a couple of spots that.
It's gotten, it's gotten worse for sure. I know one contractor was doing work for a town here in the midcoast and wound up doing too much work for the town and it's, his private clients were getting neglected. So he changed his tune, is not doing the public works for the town and now doing it in private things. So it's, it's a real conundrum right now. But anyway, thank you and, and thank you, Jeff, a great presentation, a lot of action, we have a lot, number of action items we've listed. Do you have anything you want to close with?
Just another idea for Rick. This is a street in Iceland.
This is what you have to do with your paint, Jeff.
This is what...
Doesn't it, isn't that bizarre? Isn't that great?
They have all kinds of things like that, like, like little girls running out into the street.
These are the guys painting it.
But then you have to...
Isn't that so weird?
It's like a basketball court.
We have talked to Rick and I have talked about that a little.
All right. Jeff, thanks a lot. We need to move on in our agenda. That was a great presentation. Thanks for coming again. Um, Anita, you'll have to come up here. I thought you would. Don't be snippy.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for all that you do and stick with, and it's very, very appreciated.
The slide board has been very supportive and it's engaged, and that's the best.
Thank you. Anita?
I want to thank Jeff for, he does a phenomenal job. I sit in on those meetings.
Aren't you too merry?
He's a great chair, and he, and I'm not biased.
My cooking dinner.
You only sit in? I thought you were a member.
I, Anita, I would say it for you. You've done a lot of hard work, does it well, and we appreciate it very much.
And he's very patient, and you have to have the phenomenal patience on this committee.
You think?
Because things take forever. So my question relates to maintenance, since we were just talking about that. And I hear your conundrum about time and weather and, and hot mix and contractors. But I was looking, I was looking over the budget, say, in 2017, when $30,000 was budgeted on the sidewalks line, and I think $9,000 was spent. So I, I kind of mentioned that to John French, who was, who was on, who was, I think, the chair at that time, and, and he said, "Well, Rick likes to keep the money for, just in case he needs it for paving and, and for other road things", which I really don't think was the case.
No, no.
I'm hoping...
I think you heard it wrong.
I'm hoping that's not the case.
I think you heard it wrong.
But I, I guess what I wanted to know is, is the sidewalk line dedicated to sidewalks? And does it stay in sidewalks, or is it sort of a more wishy-washy reserve for other things like salt or other things that might come up that are needed?
I'll, I'll let operations answer that question.
Definitely not, but I think the conundrum that Rick often has is, I think there's a belief that we can just fix a sidewalk and that's it, and usually it's much more complicated than that. You know, if Rick wants to do any sort of major repair to a sidewalk, you're talking drainage work, the utilities have stuff they need to do.
Trees.
There's tree, yeah, it, it becomes much more complicated than just saying, "We're gonna fix a sidewalk".
I know many, I know many are, but there are those that I'm guessing are probably not as complicated, that are just crumbled and, and...
I think he was saying it's man, what I heard is that it's, you know, you can have a budget for buying a bunch of things, but it's manpower, so if we, that a lot of it comes down to just having the time and the weather to do it.
So I, I just feel, for some reason, I just feel a great sensitivity to people on wheels.
Yeah.
Chairs.
Understandable.
Mobility scooters, trying to use a sidewalk and really having trouble with it. And, and that really worries me, because I would really like to have an accessible town, and especially where the sidewalks already exist. And I'm hoping that the money that is budgeted does, can go to just repairing these...
Yep, yep, understood.
Even the crumbly bits, you know, there, there's quite a lot of that.
Understood.
And I think that we need to be sensitive to people on wheels who cannot get around.
Understood.
So, but I, I mean, I, I definitely hear that, but then you also have the, it's, it's hard to decide. I'm one that generally says, well, who, not to worry much about the condition of the sidewalks or like a little bit of crumbling here and there, when you literally have sidewalks that you cannot, there's just a telephone pole right in the middle, and so, or there are places where there are no sidewalks, or... So it's hard to...
Well, it's all important.
It is.
So perhaps you might want to budget more.
Perhaps.
It sounds like that's what it would have to...
Because twen, even $20,000, which relative, historically speaking, is pretty generous, is really not enough.
Doesn't cover very much today, especially in today's market. I think we would just say, we, we agree with your points. I agree with that, and I also agree with, understand what Rick's conundrum is. I, I don't, I've never seen any, you know, mixing of budgets or any of that going on. More it's logistics of budgets in getting things done, including streets, by the way.
And we, and we really did try, Anita, to find one where, you know, you've got to stretch a sidewalk and it's in bad condition, and Rick doesn't need to do anything else to the roadway, like the sidewalk could feasibly just be repaired on its own, and it's shocking how little of that is the case. I mean, wouldn't you agree, Rick? Like, most of the time, we're looking at a much bigger project than just repairing a sidewalk.
Yeah, a sidewalk, um, when I'm doing sidewalks or repairing a sidewalk, if the curb is in good shape and everything, the infrastructure of the sidewalk is in good shape, we can just do an overlay. We've done that several times around town. Next winter, a lot of that tears up. So it's like, it's a constant battle, even after you've done that sidewalk, and you're, you're back at it again.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this plow on the sidewalk, Rick's having on it.
That's why they rebuild roads. That's why they build the base of roads, because the base of the road is not adequate to sustain what's above it.
Right.
Root ones that way.
It's just a plow. So, I mean, you get frost heat around it, just, it breaks it up. Then you have the plow drivers, plow driveways that do a lot of damage. They break the curbs off and everything else. But anyway, the sidewalk budget, that line, that sidewalk line goes to sidewalks. Since like storm drain goes to that, I don't use that for anything else. I have a paving line that goes to paving, and that is one I carry over a lot. I ha, I like to keep some money into the winter, and, and also, we have, actually have two seasons. We have a paving season in this time of year, getting into July in the summer.
Paving season.
And then in the spring, so it all depends on how things work out for everything, but, you know, I, I'd like the sidewalks to be a lot better, wider and everything else.
I just, thank you, and I do appreciate your work, and I know it's a hard job.
It is. Thank you.
But I, I'm, basically, I'm reflecting feedback I get from citizens who know I'm on Pathways Committee.
We do also, Anita. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to Rick.
Thanks, Anita.
With that, thanks, Jeff, for a great presentation. It was very helpful to understand all the many things that are going on with pathways. To the 10th agenda item, we were going to have a discussion on the brown-tailed moth infestation, at least I hope, as the beginning of an intense educational campaign, which I think we all need, because this is complicated and troublesome, to say the least. Do we want to start with...
So Rick prepared a little presentation.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna attempt one anyway.
He's got an Apple too, doesn't he?
Yeah, we've, we've got it.
Does he need a connector for that?
No, we've, we've...
Oh, we, oh.
We're so far above you, Bob. It's like we're just hovering in the air.
That means I can use my iPhone to get on it now.
You can, yep.
Oh, I can't wait to show them pictures. Here it comes. Here it is.
Cute. Okay. Yeah, these little critters here are really wreaking havoc around...
The hair I don't like.
You can't see it. It's microscopic.
I can feel it.
I know, really.
That's why Jenna's not here tonight.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She got a bad...
Yeah, she got a bad infestation, a rash.
Yeah, she's, I mean, she'll, she'll be okay.
So anyway, the brown-tailed moth that we're seeing all over the place, before eating trees and everything, was first established in Massachusetts in 1897, and has moved up the coast here and, and several other states and counties, and just like all these invasive insects do. One good way to identify this brown-tailed moth is the, the broken white stripes on the side and the two red dots on the posterior of it. It's, uh, I've seen them myself out in the woods and everything, and it's pretty clear that when you look at it, you can tell that's what it is. They are a growing concern for the community, and it's mostly for health and environmental issues that, that we're dealing with. Anybody that's had the rash can attest to that. Activity. They're active twice a year, and caterpillars, you see them, oh, mid-April, they emerge from their winter webs and they begin feeding and growing until they reach their maximum size in June. Their second batch of caterpillars, they will come out in, you'll see them more active in August and early October. That's the, after the moth lays its eggs, it lays its eggs on the bottom side of little oak tree leaves mostly and other places, but they, in August, they're somewhat active. They're not as active as they are in the spring. So I don't know what to say about them. They're nasty. They have the toxic hairs that we deal with. Caterpillars are in their third larval stage or begin to develop the toxic hairs. And during the height of the season, these hairs get caught up in the wind and cause health problems anywhere near the trees, especially oak trees, and this rash can be really bad. My wife had it last year, and I know she didn't like it too much. And she got it by cleaning out over top of a house that she was cleaning, out over the deck, over the doors, so they can lay their, the moths get in there and they can leave hairs behind in these places, buildings and everything else. The moths themselves, the hairs aren't toxic on them. The hairs, what happens is the moth will have, when it comes out of the cocoon, after it's gone into cocoon, hairs will stick to the moth and it can spread around. These things can be airborne too, and they do affect the respiratory infections on people. You can wheeze from it and everything. I think I may have had it. I was wheezing the other day. But anyway, they take, they'll be taking flight here soon. I think in July, they start going. This is what the brown-tailed moth looks like after it goes from caterpillar to moth. And I heard, or I read, I should say, just recently, that, I think it was last, I don't know if it was this spring or last spring, or last fall, summer, I mean, must have been last summer, because there was a moth that Hannaford and Belfast had to close their entryway because all these moths were all over the entry, the door there, because they're attracted to light.
But the hairs are not toxic.
The hair on the moth isn't, but they can carry hairs from the cocoon. Because as, as a caterpillar, the hairs can get off and they get on everything. They go in the air and, just everywhere. And when do they fly? They start flying. They emerge in July and throughout August. You'll find them flying around, and their peak activity is around lights at night, and it's usually between 10:00 PM and 12:00 AM. So on the Maine State website, they, the forestry website, they recommend turning off your outside lights at night. It supposedly, it's supposed to help keep them from flying around so much. They, I don't know, everything I'm reading online is just, there's just a lot of information out there. Everybody can research. The rash, that's, uh, everybody's dealing with a rash. You know, like I said, my wife had it last year, and I know there's several people around that have it, and it's not anything to, that you want to get, I guess. It doesn't go away.
It does, I mean, it does go away.
Well, it goes away eventually, but it, 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 it goes away and it comes back. My wife had it for a while, and then it went away a little bit, and then it kind of came back, and she started itching again. So it kind of reappears. Pardon?
What's a rash? What is a rash?
Um, let's let him finish his presentation, and then we'll have questions.
It depends on the person and the different exposure points.
Anyway, the brown-tailed moth rash is also known as a brown-tailed moth itch, and occurs after coming into contact with poisonous hairs shed by brown-tailed moth caterpillars. They're microscopic hairs, and they can be, they're airborne and are found everywhere, including trees, lawns, decks, buildings, even the cocoons themselves have the toxic hairs, and that's what causes the skin rash, and also, you can breathe those hairs in. The greatest risk is between April and July, and these toxins are stable in the environment for one to three years. The hairs can become airborne and if disturbed, so you should take precautions a year round in heavily infested areas. If you do, if anyone gets this itch, there's, there is a brown-tailed moth rash spray that my wife got last year, and you have to have a prescription for it, and you get it from Kennebec Pharmacy, which, there's one in Rockport. So, but you do have to have a prescription for it, and it helps somewhat, helps alleviate some of the itch. And then how do you control these things? Maine Forest Service recommends clipping webs between October and mid-April before caterpillars emerge from their winter webs and begin feeding on new leaves. So between October and mid-April, that's when they're in their cocoon, when they're, in their webs, and that's the time that you can remove them. You can cut them off, cut the limbs off, cut these off the limbs, and they said to soak them in soapy water, at least, at least for 24 hours. You soak them, just, it kills them somehow, I guess, or you can burn them, but cut them down, burn them in a fire. See, clipping the webs, but soaking them in water, I said that. Clipping them in the winter or very early spring before they, before they come out of the webs and start feeding on the leaves, that's the best time to, best time to do it. Between June and August is not a good time to do it. That's when they're becoming more active. Stay away from them. But if you do do any clipping of webs that you find, if you can reach them, a lot of them are in the tops of oak trees, so you can't get them unless you have a bucket truck, that you want to make sure you have a lot, you want to have long sleeves on, gloves, a respirator, and a lot of protection to keep the hairs away from you. It's better off hiring somebody to do it. This photo right here, this, this is an oak tree up on Beauquere Ave. Took that picture just a few hours ago, and you can, I didn't know it until I enlarged it, but you can see the caterpillars actually right on there, and...
Oh.
Yeah, watch out, they're gonna fall on you.
Right there?
Yeah, they're all over the place there. They, they strip the leaves right off the stem like that, and then I was wondering what all this green was up in there. I thought maybe there was new leaves coming in, but it's not. It's just the stems. So it's, uh, I don't know if the leaves have to push those stems off before they can come back out again. They said that on the website, the Maine State Forestry website says that the trees, if they defoliate completely like that, they can make it through one year, maybe two if the tree's real healthy, but usually after that, the tree is doomed. It's not gonna make it. And there's a lot of trees, I've been noticing now that all the leaves are out, there's a lot of oak trees around our area here that are completely devastated.
I heard it was more like three. It seems like when I've, when I've talked to arborists around here, it's been not quite as dire sounding as that for the trees, that most of them have felt that these, the trees were gonna be okay.
Yeah, that would just...
Well, they, they feel that they, if they, if they make it through this year. So if a moth is gonna lay their le, their eggs on the bottom side of leaves, they're not, obviously not gonna do it on that same tree.
Right.
So that tree can recuperate for next year, but the trees next to it or in the vicinity...
Could be impacted.
Are gonna be impacted, correct. So I don't know, the, what the answer is, I have talked to people, there are sprays and actually injections, because you can't really spray oak trees very well because of their elevation, but there are injections that they are looking at, that you can inject into the ground or at the base of the tree to get into the root system, to feed up into the leaves where the, where the moths will, I mean, the caterpillars will eat it and then kill them off that way. The University of Maine, I believe it is, is also researching the, what the webs are made of, and what the integrity is of that, if they can attack the integrity of that web so that the winter cold will kill the, kill them off too, which would be in a more natural way. I don't really, I'm not a fan of pesticides or anything, but sometimes you have to do what it takes, I guess. So anyway, for more information, Allison Canati, I guess is how you pronounce her name, she's an entomologist at the Maine Forest Service. There's her information, and also the Maine, State of Maine website. And there's also a Facebook support group that has a lot of information on it. Midcoast Maine Brown-Tailed Moth Support. I've been on that, and they do have a lot of information.
Oh my.
This information, by the way, I know you're taking a picture, it'll be, if you can always replay it on the website for our session tonight if you need to get it, but we'll talk to that in a minute. But go ahead, Rick, finish up while you...
That's, uh...
Good, okay, good.
And then...
See, that's my question.
Yeah, we do, I'm sure.
But clarifying also the spray, I mean, what I keep hearing from people is, I've gotten a lot of input on this, and there's this sort of, like, the town, I, well, yeah, there'll definitely be, should do something, and it, even, even with the spraying, even if they're, you know, the decision were made to use pesticides, but everything that I've read or heard is that this is not the appropriate time to do it. It wouldn't be effective.
Correct. That's correct.
That that would have needed to have been done in May.
That's correct.
Does that, does that drive with what?
That's correct. They, they, this is not the time of year to do it.
Yep. Let me talk to what we've, other towns, we are aware of other towns and what they're doing, maybe, excuse me?
Did you see the public, you saw the public answer, right?
Yeah, yeah, I will. We'll get to that in a minute, just a second.
Yeah, I would say that of the municipalities in Maine that are most aggressively, you know, kind of addressing this issue, it would be like Falmouth and Yarmouth. They have spraying programs. But I, I think even with communities like that that have spraying programs, it's only focused on public lands. So it's only land that's owned by the town, so parks and trees that are in the public right-of-way. So I, I think that's really important to...
Absolutely.
...bring up, is the fact that, you know, there's no town in Maine where they're doing a spraying program that is also spraying private property. It's all focused on public lands or trees in the public right-of-way.
Even the public right-of-way, like, that's a lot of trees.
It's a lot of trees, and I, I mean, you know, I think that they don't have the same sensitivity to pesticides that Camden has, or the same policy around the use of pesticides that we've historically adhered to.
I think that we can do some, we can get, we can hire arborists going with bucket trucks in the parks and, and places to cut these webs out of the...
In the fall.
In, in the, oh, through, over the winter, you know, during winter.
Yeah, and I, I know Rick's going around and looking at the trees in the public right-of-way to figure out where the infestations are. The Parks Department, we have an arborist on staff there who's going and, you know, assessing the trees that are in the public parks to try to figure out where is it, where is it worst, and, you know, what can we do come fall when it's appropriate to do something?
Have we done any assessment before on town-owned property that we could compare to? Would this be the first time that we're really assessing our trees for brown-tail?
This is the first time, because I think this is the first season that it's been significantly...
Well, and, and I, I think some, one of the arborists has suggested that because of the delayed spring we had this year with the oak tree, well, oak tree's not the only one. I think willow's the worst. We don't have any around here, but, and there's some that don't get affected at all. Some of the fruit trees do. I know my properties are fruit trees, apple trees. Apple trees.
Apple trees are...
And I was able to counteract, but, you know. I suggested because of the, the leafing out and the flowering has been so late this year, and so minimal, the caterpillars said, "Okay, I'm finished with this tree. I'm going on the next one", because they didn't have enough food as normally they might see in a more normal spring. So it may have exacerbated the breadth of what occurred in mid-coast Maine.
And on the wasps, that was, that was really...
That was another element. He also suggested strongly that we have, as we usually do in nature, caused an imbalance in nature. One of the natural, let me call it predators of the, of the caterpillar and the cocoons is the wasp. The wasp will actually lay eggs, as I understand it, in the same cocoon, and when the wasp comes out first, it eats the larvae, I guess is the right term. So with that balance, hopefully, because I know, last year, I'm guilty, I killed a wasp nest on my house. I, I did, you know, and now I think twice about it, because there's always a natural balance of things. We just don't know all the detail of, but I think those, I know, you mentioned that because in watching what happened in Bath and Wiscasset last year, they were really denuded. One area I know between Wiscass, no, Bath and Brunswick, that four-lane highway stretch there was really denuded, but this year, the trees are all back, so it didn't, in that case, it didn't hit them. It went a more normal cycle, but I think the intensity of it was partially caused aggravated by the slow burgeoning spring.
You can see behind you, the red areas, we can see Knox County there. We're in a moderate zone right there, and the red areas are the high, high-risk areas, so I'm sure there's a lot more defoliation going on in those, in those areas.
Was. There was last year in particular. Well, anyhow, I saw some hands in the audience that wanted to speak.
I'd love to have an opportunity.
Come up, please.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thanks for your presentation.
You're welcome. Hi, I'm Judy Gove, and I live on Start Road, which is right up around the area you were just... I just brought my phone. I should have brought a slideshow for you. We're in, and I, and I realize the town is not prepared to do anything on public lands and schools and such at this moment.
Right.
The timing and so forth, but what I'm, what I would really urge the town and the select board to do is to... select board to do is to really come up with a plan for ensuing years, because the situation is severe in parts of the town. We're, we're surrounded by oak trees on Start Road, and they are completely defoliated. They're eating the evergreens, they're eating spruce, they're eating apple, they're eating birch, they're eating whatever they can get. So, the problem's spreading, and you can actually see the line around Maguna Cook Lake and the state park. You know, it's moving. So, and my daughter lives in Falmouth, where they do have a spraying program, they use a biological spray. They spray the public roadways. I will say, she lives on a busy street, and they sprayed two trees right in her front yard because it's, and it serves kind of as a firewall, so the, the spread of the moth is somewhat contained. But in southern Maine, they've been fighting this problem for about 10 years. So we're in, we're in year two here, and last year it was bad at our house, this year, literally, we've had thousands and thousands of moths and caterpillars. So, it's a public health threat. I've been in touch with Audra about this, and I appreciate that she's been in touch with Maine CDC. I've had the rash, I'm covered with it. You almost really can't go outdoors, and this is affecting a lot of people. One thing that the towns in southern Maine are doing is they have a committee, and I mentioned this to Audra, so, of towns, townspeople who are affected by this, and just looking at, you know, really mapping out where the problem lies and trying to be a little more proactive. I think next year, you're going to have more and more people affected. So it's, it's, you know, making a beachhead here in town, and it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better. It's not in the town proper yet, it's still kind of on the outskirts.
Right, right.
But, you know, it's affecting health, it's affecting the environment, it will affect tourism and real estate values, you know, I mean, it's, it's not a small thing. My grandkids can't visit, so, you know, it, it does impact your quality of life.
Sure.
Anyway, thanks for the time to speak a little bit about this, and I urge the select board to, and Audra, to really come up with a plan of how to approach this in the next couple of years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And to start thinking about allocating some resources for it. I'd be happy to serve on a committee.
Thank you for coming.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, you can.
So, I told, and I think many of us are sympathetic and concerned about the trees and about people, and I, you know, have gotten angry emails and messages and people that, you know, the select board has to do something, and I guess, but what I, I don't see are specific things that they think that we should do. And so I've spent a lot of time researching this, many of us have. Jenna, our other, one of our other select board members, is home right now, very, I mean, very impacted by it. It's not, there's, there's, it's not the case that we have our heads in the sand and are not paying attention to this. We absolutely are, we've spent hours and hours researching it, and so, just the select board needs to come up with a plan, isn't, you know, there are any number of ticks, I mean, I think, as a huge problem.
Sure.
But at the same time, you know, I, I develop a plan for my family to deal with that, but I'm not, no, do I think we should just go fumigating everything? I'm not comfortable, and, and then there's the private property part, too, I mean, what, I guess, so just some more concrete ideas of where you think...
Well, I think, I think it would be helpful to have a committee.
Well, we have a conservation commission.
Or some group to really look at it, to talk with what towns in the southern part of the state have done.
I've been speaking with...
I mean, we've done a lot of that.
And, I know, I, there's no, there's no simple answer.
There isn't, there isn't, there isn't.
There isn't, and there's no natural predators, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to the town to...
Sure.
...mitigate on, for private landowners, but I, I just feel like it's important to come up with an action plan.
Well...
You know, what, what would the town do? Would the town spray around public roadways? Would the town look at spraying in the parks? Would the town look at the school areas?
I mean, we're looking at all, we're looking at all of that, and the schools have their own policies.
We are.
But it's also, you know, and so far, what I have personally found is that the impacts of any of the things that we can spray, even if we wanted to allocate all of those, you know, if we were sure that we were committed to allocating massive resources, it doesn't appear to be certain that these sprays, even the, the organic-ish ones, are not going to have an impact on birds and beneficial insects. I can't find, I can't find a consensus on that.
I think it's finding a balance, you know, I mean, depending, I know where we live, it's severe, and people are severely impacted.
Right.
And we're dealing with it. The whole town isn't at this point. But more and more people in the town are going to deal with it, and, you know, I think it would behoove us to say, to, to really come up with what we're willing to do, what resources we might be willing to allocate, and...
Understand.
It definitely needs to be talked about. I'm just as concerned about people getting hysterical about this and polluting our entire watershed with whatever spray they can find in that Home Depot.
Well, then, then you have the issue, too, of private homeowners using whatever is at their disposal versus the town saying, well, we can't say that, but, you know, the town making really good recommendations on how to deal with this.
Let me, let me just stop everybody for just a moment, because, no, don't apologize, that's what you're here for. Seriously, but I think, remember, the whole, this whole crescendo of this problem has come to us in the last couple of weeks.
Right.
We immediately put it on the agenda tonight to discuss, to begin a discussion, we're not going to close on it tonight, we can't.
Sure, I understand that.
But, but, exactly what you said, we're gonna, this is an open discussion, we've done homework with other towns, we've done homework with our public works, we're trying to figure out now what the best approach for public-owned properties are. In its parallel, we still, I still believe, at least I do, that there needs to be a, some private-owned homeowner's education on what is effective and what is not. For example, arborists have told me, don't go cutting down the trees, because if you do, when the tree falls, it's going to upset all of the brown-tailed moth hair, the litter, and cause the problem to be worse. Oak trees can last quite a while after they even quote-unquote "killed." Two, there's many things we can do as individuals. Also, there's a flyer here that we got developed by Nancy Cottle Johnson on caution, who you're hiring and what's being done by whom. The state mandates that all this kind of work should be done by a licensed commercial person. There are only, I think there's only like 20 in the state, that's not a lot, and we've got to be really careful with that because Band-Aid solutions are not going to solve the problem, may even, may even exacerbate it. Three, to Allison's point about sprays, now BT, as I understand it, is a, I asked if it was organic, and it's supposed to be, but the town has pesticide policy that was developed in 2008, doesn't say we can't use organics, but we have to be careful, what's going to have to happen is we're going to have to assess what the, just as everybody should, the damage on their trees, what's causing it, how bad it is in the next month or two to determine the action plan. Apple trees are kind of easy, they're low to the ground, you can clip them, you can, you know, do as Rick suggested, because that's what I did on my property, and they didn't come back this year. But that's different than what you're talking about, your devastated area.
We're talking about a whole canopy.
Understood, understood, understood.
I've seen it, it is alarming.
Understood, understood, but it's going to have to be a combined effort between private landowners and the town has to do its thing on our land and the private...
Resource for private property owners who are struggling with this problem, so...
Yeah, and I think that should be done sooner than later.
Help on that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I would like to see that in July, no, later than July. But I, I agree with what everything you said.
Yeah, so, we've seen last year, it, it was bad, so this is year two where we are. So, you know, as, as things progress across the geographic region, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, it's huge, it's huge.
That's where I live, or, you know, near that area.
The problem is, bottom line, the problem is recognized by the town, it's taking quite a bit of man-hours individually and collectively, I wanted to have an arborist...
Spent hours talking to arborists.
Yeah, I wanted to have an arborist...
Believe me, I've spent hours as a...
I bet you have. I wanted to have an arborist here tonight, unfortunately, couldn't make that a short notice, but we will, we'll do that going forward.
I think that would be great, and, yeah, and, and there's interest, people who are interested in being involved, so...
Good to know. And as I said, also, there are flyers here, if anybody wants to take them, we'll leave them in the town, town office about being cautious about what you hire and who you hire, we want to be careful with that, because my fear would be somebody coming in with private property, with some kind of a pesticide they think's going to work, I, you know, I, you know, I'd get real caution with that.
It's...